And I will ask Janie Tinkell.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Ikayis?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Lightbite?
Yes.
Dr. Truman is absent.
And then we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask that you and Concha Secola lead us in what.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then we'll go ahead to the agenda. We have approval for minutes from the regular meeting held on March 13th, 2019. What is your question?
To a point.
Okay. Any discussion?
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Ikayis?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Kinneardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Lightbite?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
And then approval for minutes from this special meeting held on March 20th, 2019. What is your question? So I'm sorry for saying that. Any discussion? And we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Ikayis?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Kinneardy?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Lightbite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
I'm staying.
Then we have approval for counts for the month of March. Is there a motion to approve?
Okay.
Ms. Duncan? Any discussion?
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Kinneardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Lightbite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Ikayis?
Yes.
And then do we have any communications from the public? I think she. Then we will go ahead to, is there correspondence by the way?
Uh, no.
Okay. Then we will go ahead with announcements. Well, we have some district recognition. I believe we have the Math 24 Champions here in Brenton Bowers. Can you tell us all about the Math 24?
Absolutely. If you're a Math 24 student, would you sign up? Our Math 24, these are our math whizzes of Marshfield Elementary Schools. Our Math 24 competition was in its eighth year this year. Schools start in September already, learning the game of Math 24 and practice till February. We have school playoffs. This year we had almost a little over 300 kids participating, which is wonderful that many kids are into math. And then we had our district competition at Madison School in March. Mrs. Shear, the principal, and Mrs. Toppness, the fourth grade teacher, and myself, we put this on and helped 100 kids play that game all day. Now, in order to learn how to play that game, we have Ava Hag, who's going to explain how to play that game.
So to play Math 24, you have to use all the numbers one time to make 24. And I'll give you a moment to see if you can figure it out.
You can add, subtract, multiply, or divide.
The answer is three minus two is one, one plus five is six, six times four is twenty-four.
And it's that easy.
Easy. This is a fourth grade card. A fifth grade card has double digits, so the numbers might be 12, 23, 15, and 4. And then the sixth grade cards have two circles, and you have to figure out the variable in the middle. What was interesting in this year's sixth grade competition, at the final round, they played four rounds, at the final round, it was so cutthroat, so fast, before I could even lay the card down, their fingers were there, that we had to vary how they were going to tap in. Sometimes they'd have to tap, I'd yell, "Two fingers on a corner," and then they'd have to do that, or a finger on the mat, or slap jackets. So it wasn't, they didn't even know the card, what was going to be there, but they were already on it, and they could go like that. It's really a great thing. What's nice is it's only knowing your math facts, so it's open for any student in the whole district, and that's what's really cool. Tonight we have students who became the top four or were the sportsmanship award winners. Every year, every grade level had a sportsmanship person who really displayed a good attitude as they came in. They shook hands, "Good luck, good luck." Somebody would get a card, they'd say, "Great card, way to go," and at the end they'd say, "Great game." It was all about the joy and love of playing a game and having fun with your friends, being in a math competition. So, in grade four, Saka Contrati was our champion. You can wave to everybody. He's from Grant School. Jasmine Booth from Washington was our fourth grade second place. Ava Hag from Nasonville, and Scarlett Madison from Grant. And we're our fourth grade winners. And Trevin Fries, he's here, so go ahead, Trevin Fries, go ahead. Wave to him. Yep. He was our fourth grade's sportsmanship winner, so that was very cool. Our fifth grade kids were all from Grant. Cole Kenny, Ben Jordan, turn around and wave, Ben. Come on, guys. Neil Kanugunta and Kylie Lothenberg. And Jason Absby from Madison School was our sportsmanship award winner. And our sixth grade champion was Joel DeCula. Owen Horniman from Washington School was the second place. Rahul Disenyaki from Grant School was the third place. And then Jonathan Clum from Nasonville. And Trinity Zeeman from Grant School was our sportsmanship award winner. So we were very excited about these kids. And what was cool is the kids who won our sport, all of our winners got big trophies or medals, like Ava Hag has done. But our sportsmanship award winners got the cards for the next year, so they're already practicing. And they have lots of friends that are practicing with them. So that's pretty cool, too. So I'd like to congratulate them. Yes, very proud. Can I just go into the next one? Okay. All right. For the next one, we have two special sixth grade leadership presenters will be doing that.
My name is Brooke Begatke.
And I'm Peyton Broderick. We are representing the Marshfield School District's sixth grade leadership team. Tonight, we would like to recognize the terrific efforts of six special community members. Jeff Whitrock from Pioneer Bank. Carissa Kilty from Marshall Medical Center. Kristen Harvey from Inclusa. Sam Warpe from Marshall Wastewater Treatment Facility. Paula Ruston from Pioneer Bank. And Megha Karma from Associated Bank. What started as a one-year leadership, MACKI Leadership Project in 2014, has turned into six years of awesomeness. This is the group that has organized a retreat day for the sixth grade leadership students of the Marshfield School District for the past six years. They plan the day to help revitalize us, renew our enthusiasm, and review the seven habits of highly effective teams. But what is more important to us is that they are positive role models, showing us firsthand how much adults in our community care about the students of our district, and wants to help develop us into leaders for the future. They take time off from their work to cure the conference that are at the Marshall Medical Center to hold today, provide a lunch and snacks, and provide all the materials we need for the day. They are unselfish with their time, talents, and treasures. We are in awe of their leadership abilities. This group has developed our day as a big game. We go through various challenges. As we review the fundamentals of leadership, the winning team receives a huge candy bar. On behalf of the leader, on behalf of the leadership students, please accept your very own chocolate bar, because you are definitely a winning team. Thank you for making a difference in the lives of kids.
Thank you. Thank you for all the time.
I think our kids in this district can just run the school board. Is it brighter than I am?
Thank you. So much fun. Thank you. I have one recognition. We have a certificate for Amber Lightbite, who has been on board for a number of years now. So 12, actually.
I took a couple of years off.
So it's nine.
I've been on nine, but I've served since 2008, so you can't do the math there.
Sure. And I have known Amber for over 25 years, as I was thinking back. She helped put together our 4K program when she was with High Piper. She worked with Pathway Partners in our mentoring program. She helped with our YES Committees to pass referendum. And then in her, and then she started serving on the board. In other words, she has always been involved in the schools, always. And then since then, she's also been Director of the Marshfield Community Foundation, which has partnered for many fundraising projects that have helped our school district. And the most recent one, we had the groundbreaking today for the new athletic facilities. So we have been very blessed in our community to have Amber as a part of it, and part of the fabric of the community, and more importantly, our school district to us. So we want to thank you, and I also want the rest of the board to know that at the end of the meeting, before we adjourn, we have a gift for you, and we also want to take a few minutes for other board members to share whatever they want with Amber. So we'll do that later, but for right now, thank you so much. And. Thank you, Frances. I will have a couple of words at the end of this. My last words. And then move into the superintendents.
Yeah, we'll move on with the agenda. I've got just a couple of items I wanted to remind everyone, in case you hadn't already been seeing the advertisements that are out there, that the Children's Festival will be held this Saturday, April 13th, running from 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 in the afternoon at the Bozen Company Fieldhouse at Marshfield High School. Admission is $2. This year's theme is, "When I Grow Up, I Want to Be a..." So we would encourage the public to come and visit over 50 booths of fun educational activities for families. The money that is raised for this event at the Children's Festival is donated back to our Human Services Academy. The Human Services Academy is a program at Marshfield High School located in the tiny Tiger Intergenerational Center. The one other announcement that I wanted to be sure to mention is that we're coming up on a big weekend for our drama department. The Marshfield High School Drama Club will present this year's spring musical titled Into the Woods. This, later this week, that will be held at the Marshfield High School Auditorium. Performances will be held at 7:30 p.m. on April 11th, 12th, and the 13th. That is tomorrow already, so that's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Tickets may be purchased at the high school main office or online at showticketsforyou.com. Tickets are $9 for students and senior citizens 55 years and older, and $10 for regular adult admission. All seats are reserved. That concludes the report. With that, then, I think we're going to move into the next agenda item, is a special presentation that we have this evening. So it's my pleasure, Deja, if you want to start making your way up, it's my pleasure to introduce Deja Jordana, who is a Spanish teacher in the school district. She is also the recipient of the 2018-19 Oscar W. Neal Fellowship from the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point School of Education. She's, this fellowship was given to her as part of a program that she proposed titled Talk Abroad and Community Event. And she is here this evening to present to all of us what she's been working on as part of this fellowship. Take it away.
You basically just said everything, so I'll just say a few words here. Like you said, my name is Deja Jordana. It's my third year in the district. I teach Spanish at the middle school and high school. This year, I got to work with the Oscar Neal Fellowship through UW Stevens Point. I'm an alumni of Stevens Point, so I was really proud and happy to combine my new job and where I just was, in college. So I made a little PowerPoint just to show you some pictures of some of the events and some of the things that we did this year with this fellowship. So to start it off, last year, I was asked to go back to Stevens Point and be an alumni speaker at the end of the year dinner. There, I met this woman. Her name is Linda Fernholtz. And the picture doesn't do her justice for how energetic and friendly and wonderful this woman is. She is a teacher at the university. She's now the Chair of the Education Department, but at that time she was a teacher. I met her that night, we talked for five minutes, and she grabbed me and said, "You know what? I feel it. You're the next award recipient." So I applied when it came out, and I got the fellowship. So all year I've been working very closely with Linda and a few other professors at the university as well. So reading about Oscar Neal, he was a man who loved the arts, and so a lot of what we did this year had to do with art and culture to honor him. When I was thinking about how I would do this, I decided I would work with the upper level Spanish students. So for any of the other students we still have in the room today, if you stick around in Spanish maybe, you might get an opportunity to do some of these things. So I worked with my four, Spanish four students, and I asked Leslie Rigel to work with me as well, with her four honors and her AP students. And she's here tonight. She supported me through this whole process, and we worked together to do everything that was done. So I split it up into three aspects. Talk Abroad, a culture fair, and then I brought in a woman with Wisconsin Nicaraguan partners as well. So I'll just briefly talk about those three things. The first part was Talk Abroad. Talk Abroad is an online platform where my students had the opportunity to Skype native Spanish speakers around the world. So there were speakers from Colombia, Panama, Spain, anywhere you could think of. They were from all around the world. They had profiles, so my students could pick maybe someone who liked the same music as them, or someone who liked the same sports team as them. And then they had 10-minute conversations with these native Spanish speakers. We've done three of them so far. Each student received four conversations, so we still have one more conversation to complete this year. In these conversations, I got to pick the conversation topics. So my students and these native speakers spoke about art, about culture. So that was a very broad topic for me. To me, culture and art includes music, dance, food, sports, paintings, anything that you can think of. So my students got to pick a subject that they were interested in, and then talk to someone who had real knowledge about it in their country, and kind of make some comparisons and contrasts with what they knew and what they thought they knew. So just really briefly, I wasn't sure what the board wanted to know tonight or not, so I just put the pricing on there. For 58 students to have four 10-minute conversations with native Spanish speakers, it was $1,700. The second thing that I did was put on a culture fair. You may have seen advertisements around town. I worked really hard to advertise. I had some outdoor signs at some common businesses. We had over 150 signs that my students supposedly hung up around town. We hung up signs around the school. I was on the Facebook page, the Stevens Point Facebook page, anything I could think of. The Hub City Times, we had an article. So you may have seen the advertising for this. It was on March 6th, from 4:30 to 6:30 in the high school commons. So what it was, was my students did some research. Let's say they started talking to their conversation partner and realized they were really interested in the music of that country. So their conversation partner was from a country, let's say Colombia. They picked that country as their country of study, and then picked the topic they wanted to study, and did a big research project on it. So we made big poster boards, and we made it as hands-on as we possibly could. So I was making runs to Walmart every other week to get ingredients for them to cook the food they were researching, or to get a soccer ball, because they were researching soccer, or to get games that they could play, because they were researching different aspects of culture. So we made it as hands-on as possible. And overall, that event cost $1,600. I have some more pictures here to show you about this event. Just a few things, we had a lot of kids come, which was amazing. So I had a few kid games here. This was cactus toss, and we had a pinata, and we had fun things for the kids to hold up and take pictures, a little thing to stand behind, so it looked like they were salsa dancers, just all the stuff that I could think of, that maybe would entertain a kid. Just some various decorations. We even got the restaurant in town, Taca Ria El Sol, to donate some Frida Kahlo pictures. So we had some really beautiful decorations all throughout the commons. We kind of just transformed that area. It's hard to see, but this is just an overview of what it looked like. We had students lined all the way along here, and in the middle, in the back, we had some food that people could eat as well, from Taca Ria El Sol. They catered for us. So it was a large event, and we had a really great time doing it. I was worried that no one was going to show up, but at one point I was worried that there were too many people there, and we wouldn't be able to figure it out. But it was amazing. So many of the kids' families came, so many of our students came, their little siblings. It was just an incredible event. Just a few close-ups of some of the projects. Some of the kids worked so hard. She painted that by hand. These guys bought spray paint and painted theirs. In the tech department, and kids were getting really, really creative with their projects. It was really incredible to see some of their individual projects. So like I said, I bought some ingredients, so people could try to make the foods that they were talking about. Over here, these guys did boxing, so I bought them soccer boppers, so that the kids could play, fight with each other. So it was really fun. It was really interactive, is what we wanted to do with everything. And this is the food. We had all different kinds of tacos from Taca Ria El Sol, including tongue tacos, cow tongue. So not many people tried those, but eventually, by the end of the night, they were gone. This is our pinata. We had to kind of makeshift how we were going to get it up there, but we had some kids hitting a few pinatas. We had three of them. We had a student even go as far as making his own wheel and game with it, so we could do an auction at the end of the night. It was really incredible to see what the students put into their work. Overall, I'm just so proud of them, and it was amazing to see what they could do. This is a big group. This is us. This is everyone that participated. Leslie and I right over here, and then the 58 students that participated in four, four honors and AP. And the last thing that I did this year with this fellowship was I brought in a woman, Maria Tercero. She's from Nicaragua. I brought her in with the Wisconsin Nicaraguan partners. So she's been in Wisconsin. She's actually at my house waiting for me now. She is still in Wisconsin, so last night here, but she was here for a total of two weeks. She was with me for four days. So I hosted her in my home, and she came to work with me every day. She does only speak Spanish, so that was interesting for me to practice my Spanish, really see how good I was at it. But she is incredible. She's a theater teacher in Nicaragua, and she started a program after school, so that kids in Nicaragua can have a safe, fun, creative place to be. And she's also a volunteer with Wisconsin Nicaraguan Partners. So we got her to come here, and we did various activities. We were having my Spanish students do theater activities in Spanish. It was incredible, the way we could connect the different cultures and the different types of learning that we had. So just a few pictures to bring her in and everything. Her ticket was $1,300, and everything that we had to do, cooking and everything. We rented out the food lab her entire day, and just she made us how to, she showed us how to make handmade tortillas. It was really fun. So just a few pictures from that. Just some of my kids doing some activities, sitting on the ground every day. We had to move the desks off to the side, and the first day, the kids were like, "Oh, okay, I guess." And by the fourth day, they were like, "Let's move the desk right away. Let's get started." So it was really amazing to see them. She worked with my middle schoolers, she worked with my high schoolers, she worked on, these guys are being statues. They are having fun, but they were told not to smile, because they were being statues, they were focusing on concentration, breathing. It was amazing, everything that she did with us. The first day she was here, she presented to the entire Spanish department at the high school, and told us about the life of a child in Nicaragua, so that my students could learn firsthand what someone their age may be experiencing in another country, which is, no matter how much I study, I will never know firsthand exactly what everything is like in a Spanish-speaking country. So having her here was just incredible. Just some different activities, they had a lot of fun. We spent four days just laughing and having a great time in the classroom, and I truly feel like she enriched my students' lives this year, where they got to, you know, they had to, I wasn't just, "Ms. G, what did you just say in Spanish?" It was having to understand her and having to really try to problem-solve through situations with someone who didn't speak the same language as them. Just a few more pictures here. This was the cooking day. These are our tortillas. We didn't even set anything on fire. It was amazing. She showed us how to do everything. I did try to make tortillas at home last night, and they didn't turn out the same. So waiting on that, but she did teach us the best that she could. Just, the kids were having so much fun. She's right here in the midst of all the kids. They really just connected with her so much, and it was incredible for me to see as well. So for the future, this grant was about $10,000 that I got, and I've only spent $4,600 of it, so I plan on continuing with these programs. Specifically, Talk Abroad. Talk Abroad, that platform for my students to Skype these native speakers, I think is an invaluable experience for them. So I'm continuing to plan that on for at least two more years with the money that I have from this fellowship. And I would love to discuss, when the time comes closer, continuing the program even after the fellowship is gone. I think it's incredible for my students. I was planning on only doing the culture fair for this year, but Dr. Christensen and Kim, they came, and they were so supportive and so kind, and they mentioned the potential of wanting to do it again, and I'm very open to that idea. So I would also potentially do that event again, and maybe it would be even bigger and even better this year. So that's basically all I had to say about it. I do just want to thank everyone, the community, for being so supportive of it, and these two for coming that night, and Leslie for helping me through every single step of it. I could not have done it without her. Jason for being so supportive of me and allowing me to have this woman in our school and everything. So I just thank everyone so much. I'm so honored to work in this district, and to do awesome stuff like this. So I hope I can keep doing good things for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Deja. That was great. I did, I just want to note also that she's going to be doing a presentation on campus, I think, in just a few weeks, correct?
I am, yes. Speaking at that same dinner, actually, that I spoke at as an alumni, now I'm going back to speak as the award winner, so it's really incredible.
So we felt this was a great opportunity to not only show board members, but have, as part of a board meeting, she could do a dress rehearsal, a representation, but also show off to all of us what she's been doing. I think it's just a great program and a great project that you took on, and what a great way to feature the school district on campus at UW SC as well. So thank you.
Thank you. That was wonderful. Next on the agenda is the acceptance of gifts. We have on the list, t-shirts valued at $1,000, $16 donated to Madison Elementary from the Central Wisconsin State Fair, $50 from the Marshfield Lions Club for the middle school art program, $2,500 from the Green Bay Packers Foundation for the high school AP program. We have four donations, $5,000 from Marshfield Clinic Health Systems, $2,400 from Mr. and Mrs. Derek Blanchard, $100 from Mary Boning, $500 from Mr. and Mrs. Graham Olson. And then to Lincoln Elementary, we have $20 from Jacqueline Bennett for the school store, toys valued at $500 from Wood County Human Services, $20 from Joe and Tammy Schwab, and $500 from the Marshfield Clinic Health Systems. What is your desire regarding these gifts?
Accept with great thanks.
Do we have a second?
I'll second this one.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Kinneardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Lightbite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Ikayis?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
And then if it's okay with the board, I would like to move under number 13, IMB, the approval of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $70 million note anticipation, note to anticipation notes. And I'm asking if we can do that, because we have someone who's here from out of town, who has been working with us on that, and has to drive home, so in this weather, it would be helpful to get that out of the way. Is that okay with everyone? Yes. And we will leave that up, and I'll let Dale take over, since that's out of there.
Sure. First of all, Jeff Sealy is with us tonight as a financial advisor from Ehlers and Associates. And Jeff is the senior municipal advisor for Ehlers. I think the last board meeting, we talked about this idea of having a fund that we could draw from to pay bills as they come in on the athletic complex and all the other bills that come in, the athletic facility improvements. And it was noted that we would need some money at that time to pay bills as later some of the contributions from people from the public come in. So on behalf tonight of the finance committee, to follow up on previous discussions, I would like to recommend that we... like to recommend that we approve the resolution for a $7 million anticipation note or note of anticipation, the series 2019A, to move forward with this line of credit. It's not a line of credit, but a absolute.
So the motion is on behalf of the finance committee, so we don't need a second. Any questions? I think Dale just kind of pointed out that even though it's a note, it operates like a line of credit, so you don't owe money until you draw. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any questions and discussion? Okay. We'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Hit the road, Jeff.
Thank you. Safe travels.
Safe travels.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll go back up to curriculum and instruction. The curriculum and instruction committee looked at the business and information technology curriculum for grade seven through 12 and hopefully you all got to see that in board docs. And the, we were able to, there's also a page in there that has the dollar amounts, so the budget page. And the other thing that's very interesting there, all the certifications that our students can get through these programs. It is amazing how much that has grown in the years that I've watched it. The other thing that was really interesting is all the connections that our kids have thanks to our staff with the community and with employers and with opportunities at businesses. And some of the classwork actually takes place at some of these businesses where they learn specific skills. So as you go through that, you might, you know, take a look at some of those outstanding things. That is first reading. So you have a month and if you have any questions, feel free to call or Chuck Trancler did the presentation. If you want to ask him, ask him. Okay. Then we looked at PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports System that we have in place. For the past couple of years, they have concentrated on the tier one PBIS training and practicing and the support building for the teachers and the staff. And we have a good, solid foundation there. So using the criteria from PBIS, five of our seven schools moved on to tier two this year. And it's, it's meant to be so everyone, you know, has a chance to be fully trained. So the other two schools might have had new personnel or whatever and just needed that foundation first. So it's intentionally validated, so it's okay. And so this year has been tier two for five of those schools and then gaining that foundation for the other two. Marshfield also hosted two regional PBIS events and presented during the PBIS Leadership Conference in 2018 and they're going to be presenting again this year. Then we looked at driver's ed curriculum and just where it should fit in the curriculum cycle. And so it is due for review and it will be coming to the committee in June. And then on the agenda for action, we have approval of the Herker and Associates memorandum of understanding pursuant to policy 9505. So this is in line with all the other MOUs that we have with other behavioral health providers in the community, allowing them to see their clients who are our students at our facilities so they don't have to leave school for their all- important day and they can, you know, have their appointment and get back to class. So on behalf of the committee, I would ask that you approve that memorandum of understanding with Herker and Associates.
On behalf of the committee, we have a motion to approve this. Is there any discussion? Sinan Jenny, would you take the vote?
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
That concludes curriculum and instruction. Thank you. And then facilities, safety and transportation.
The chair, I just want to make one quick comment since we're on that.
Sure.
I remember we did have a wonderful groundbreaking ceremony today out at Marshfield High School and I'm making that on behalf of the committee or whatever, but many people were there and it was just amazing to me as a person who's been in this district since 1972 to just see this happening. It was just tremendous and to see the number of people in this community that have come together to make a wonderful project happen. So there are some pictures out there on Facebook and I'm sure on Focus or Focus Marshfield, you can see some of the photos also. Kids were the ones that did the shell turning as far as the ground, the groundbreaking. So I thought that was really cool. So I apologize for interrupting, but I just wanted to add about groundbreaking. It was an awesome, awesome affair.
And it will be great for our students, but also for the community.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we'll move on to policy and legislation.
Please. Thank you. So the committee met on March 19th and it was a really lean meeting. The, the main item that was discussed at that meeting was the revision to the food services policy, policy 8500. And if you open up that policy in board docs, you'll see that there's really one small revision that is on page two and it's, it's related to refunds, isn't it? That the refunds can be transferred to other students within the district. And so it was just a small edit to the policy, but we're going to be moving to approve that tonight. The only other two items on the agenda at the March 19th meeting were first readings for the middle school handbook and the high school student handbook. So if you have any questions or comments or edits to the student handbook, contact Sam, myself, Karen. I'm sure there'll be some editing happening at the next meeting anyway and, and we will pursue any changes or edits. So that is the update. So moving back to 8500, on behalf of the committee, I move to approve the policy 8500, food services policy.
So we have a motion on behalf of the committee. Do we have any discussion, any questions about the policy?
Ms. G?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Employee relations did meet April 2nd and as you can see, we had a number of items and all for action. The only things that are first readings are the substitute handbook and the extended duty coach, summer school, other appointed staff handbook. So if you have questions on those, please bring those to administration or to Dale or Sam as the remaining committee members. And so I'll circle back to the top and this is not on behalf of the committee, but as an individual motion, I want to approve the resignation of Emily Prue, teacher grade six from Nayslandville.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Dale. Any questions?
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
And then we have approval of employment of new personnel. Terrence Johnson, special education teacher at the high school, replacing Paul Marks. And Faith Storms, teacher assistant, special education at the high school, replacing, and I'm sorry for this, but Rajendra Sharma, I believe.
Do we have a second?
Committee, off second again.
Any questions or comments? We'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
And then at our meeting, it was reported that our local teachers' union had ratified our agreement so that we have a agreement for professional staff for the salary increases next year and we would need that to be approved by the entire board. My behalf.
So we have a motion on behalf of the committee to approve the bargaining agreement between the board and our professional staff. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
At our meeting, we also reviewed the teacher credentialing proposal for 2019-20. And there was detailing of that in your board packet to explain how that will be distributed. And on behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion as well.
So on behalf of the committee, we have a motion to approve the teacher credentialing proposal for 2019, 2020 school year. Any questions or comments?
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
We discussed post-employment benefit language for administrative staff, staff, excuse me. This is also coming back again. We've discussed it in the past and it's been in your board packet. We have no changes. It is the same agreement. So on behalf of the committee, I'd also like to present that for action.
Okay. So we have a motion on behalf of the committee to approve the wage increases for support staff for the 2019, 2020 school year. Any questions or comments?
No, it was employment benefit.
Well, the employment.
We're up one. We'll get to that.
I went on to the next one. That's my fault. Backtrack. This is a motion to approve the post-employment benefit language for administrative staff. There we go. Any questions or comments? We'll go ahead and take the vote. Thank you.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
And then we also reviewed the increase for support staff for 2019, 2020. It amounts to people moving over a step and receiving the same increase, the 2.94, I believe, was the base wage increase. And as we have done in the past, and if anyone is near the top of the range, it will go into their supplemental. So could you maybe explain that a little bit?
Yeah, one, one detail to that would be if you look at the document, the proposal or chart in board docs, the individual cells are all increased by 2.44%. When you consider that increase and a lane movement, the, the total increase for the employee group comes to the 2.94% that Amber was referring to.
Now that I'm watching fast by school, we have a motion on behalf of the committee to approve the wage increases for support staff for 2019 to 2020 school year. Any questions or comments?
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
And then the next item is the approval of the wage increase for district level staff. And that amounts to what we approved within the bargaining agreement.
So on behalf of the committee, we have a proposal or a motion to approve the wage increases for district level staff for 2019 to 2020 as presented in the document. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
And the last item for your consideration tonight on behalf of the committee are the wage increases for the administrative staff. Those also are tied to an overall percentage of 2.94 with small differences between. Let me back up on that. It's 2.94% for district level staff, levels one through four. And then for level five, we also have those level staff getting increases of the same percentage.
So we have a motion on behalf of the committee to approve the wage increases for administrative staff for 2019 to 2020 school year based on the document that we have. And any questions or comments?
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Okay. We got a number of presentations regarding budgets for various groups. First of all, we find out of order here. What we know, I've got the information technology budget. I think that was a first. Is that for, yeah. And Mike Grabow presented that to us and that includes everything from contracted services to variety of infrastructure, network, software licensing, and anything from non-capital items and batteries and the personal learning classroom technology. And Mike presented his budget proposal for this next year. So that was our first item. No approval needed there. We also had Mr. Stravsky in the hot seat tonight and he came forward and presented his buildings and grounds budget for next year. And I think it's important to note here again, as I've said before, you know, I've been, I've been the one that's really kind of tried to help support the idea that our facilities are continually being maintained. There's a number of items at the high school, such as a variety of water pipe replacements. Mr. Stravsky told us tonight, there's actually seven different types of lines of water that come in and out of that school. There are some fieldhouse repairs, locker replacement. There are some security codes and safety codes taking care of the grant, air conditioning chiller and any other number of items as well as district roof repair money that is set aside, concrete repair, bleacher repair. And I guess I'd like to just go on again to mention that we do have an annual budget that takes care of maintenance in our district and that was presented to us very efficiently by Mr. Stravsky. Next, we went on to our summer school budget that has been completed and it's a little more than last year, but we have some additional staff, I believe, that have been added this year as well. Have Mike remembering that correctly from our.
It's got more to do with the wage increase.
Yeah, that's right. We did increase the wage increase for our summer school staff. We were finding that the amount that was being paid, um, maybe wasn't enough of an incentive to some of our in-season, if you like to call it that, in-school staff to apply for some of the school positions. At times, we were have to relying upon a number of individuals from outside of our district to try to fill some of those positions, but there has been a wage increase from those people. And it sounds like according to our HR personnel person, we're doing a pretty good job of filling those spots. So that was also presented tonight. We had the audit proposal tonight. We had some, we had three different firms contact us with RFPs on the audit proposal. And the district has selected, well, I shouldn't say selected. I'm going to present to you tonight an action item that the district approved the Hawkins Ash CPA of Marshfield as our. Approval of vendor donations?
Yes.
To the athletic facility project that has to be formally approved. So on behalf of the finance committee, that's an action item.
Then, on behalf of the committee, we have the motion to approve the updated donor list and naming opportunities for the Marshfield Athletic Facility Project since April 11, 2018.
Aaron, I'm sorry, we have a little. Go ahead.
So do we have any questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the floor.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
We also have, I guess you would call these donors as well, have requested that they be recognized and listed for various contributions as well. And they will be recognized with some plaques that are put up on some of the support pillars, I believe, that are on the outside of the stadium, as to where the actual location will be. Again, quite an extensive list of those people. And again, that is an approval item tonight, that we approve the vendor donations on behalf of the committee.
So we have a motion to approve the vendor donations to the athletic facility project with permanent logos. Any questions or comments about those?
Those logos will be on the pillars, but some may appear in other places within the stadium and athletic facilities.
If anybody would like to look later, I've got some of the graphics for some of those people as well.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we have another approval item, the budget adjustment recommendations from Mr. Sosserman because of some unrealized expenditures in salaries and benefits. There was $600,000 at that point that could be used for other projects, and it will be used for things like loading dock repairs, increased costs because of the private school voucher payments. By the way, that cost has gone from $252,562 last year to $500,466.5. And so that will be part of the budget adjustment as well. There will be some huge improvements that are to be made as part of the 2019-2020 budget. And then, there are some athletic facility expenses also that are ongoing regarding the building of our facilities. So I guess I would ask for the approval, on behalf of the committee, the approval of the budget adjustment recommendations from Mr. Sosserman for 2018-19.
Okay, the motion is on behalf of the committee to reallocate the funds for $600,000. And that is, those reallocations are listed in the document in board docs. Any questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the floor.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Amber, as she always does, is taking care of me here. And we've been friends for a long time, and she's got my best interest at heart. And she says, hey, we forgot to approve the 2019 summer school inclusion. Talked about it, but I forgot to.
Talked about it, but I forgot to approve it. So on behalf of the committee, let's approve that.
Okay, that motion is on behalf of the committee. Any questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the floor.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we'll move on to new business.
And Amber cannot leave. She's got a statement.
We'll start with approval of the blended 4K program. And is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to approve a blended 4K program. Any discussion?
No, except for the fact that we have technically had a blended program. We're ready with the addition of 4K at Washington, but we have never really had the overall approval by the board, I believe, to indicate that we are up in the program. Would I say that?
And the other thing, I mean, I think we had a really good meeting, a special meeting on Monday night, and I feel like fog has lifted and some confusion around 4K programs. So I'm really excited about moving to actually approving a blended program, sort of form follows function. But I just want to also say that I really, I'm going to be voting on this with the clear expectation that this school administration will develop a comprehensive strategic plan of the blended program so that the board doesn't have to be in the minutia of the 4K program, that we can understand where the program is going, what standards will exist for sites, feasibility of capacity within the community and the school. So I just think that as we're moving toward it, it needs to be an integral part of that is that we need a clear documented strategic plan that the board can approve, and then the administration can run the 4K program. So it's with that in mind that I'm, you know, supportive of this motion, but just wanted to make that clear.
I agree with you, Dorothy, and what we are approving here is just the fact that we have a blended 4K program for an action item. And what you're saying is also very pertinent to the next item that's an action item, which is the approval of the additional 4K site at Madison. Goes to the same comments.
Any other comments or questions? Then I'll just add on to Dorothy's. I am, I think it's nice to have options for, so the blended program is fine with me. And I guess my only hesitation, which I hope is part of, is how we can support the sections we have and with the numbers of kids we have. So I just wasn't sure how that would play out because we don't have enough sections for the number of kids we now have. And if we add more sections, how will we support that number of sections for enrollment population? So that's what I want to know going forward is how that works. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Leifey?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
The next item is approval of a 4K site at Madison Elementary. I'd like to make a motion to approve the addition of a 4K site at Madison Elementary. I'd like to say that. Thank you. Any questions or comments? I guess.
There's one question.
Yes.
And we are committing to it at this time. One additional section, because we have talked to, you know, depending upon enrollment numbers of up to two. Up to two. So exactly what we're talking about here.
Yeah, we're here. The recommendation was up to two, you know, depend upon enrollments.
Thank you.
So then, I have a question on that because would it be one morning and one afternoon session?
Yes, that would be intense.
So then, but we can't fill the current afternoon sessions that we have, so I'm just, I'm just wondering how that's going to work. Why would we add another afternoon session when we can't fill? I mean, we've got some afternoon sessions with really, really low, low numbers.
And that's why it's up to, if we don't have the enrollment, it would be just a single section that ran in the enrollment.
And I get that, but that is then linked to our next approval, which is staffing. So I think it's important for us to, you know, take that into consideration if we're, again, I'm completely supportive of a blended program, completely supportive. But I'm also wondering about expending additional personnel costs when we're going to have empty seats in the community and we're going to be investing in personnel in the, just in terms of being fiscally responsible, I think it's important for us to, you know, think about that.
When we looked at the numbers Monday night, our sites at Washington School were full in the morning and the afternoon with a waiting list, and our sites at the YMCA morning and afternoon were full. These are the only two sites that do not offer wraparound care. We're talking about adding parent choice. So if they want a program without wraparound care within the school, Madison would be it. I don't think we can limit that before we even see what people want. Since those programs are already full, we have to offer them the choice and see what happens.
I think we're operating here a little bit in discussion on the concept that we will fill that first section. We're not even quite sure of that. We're going to operate, we're approving that potentially tonight, but, you know, if tonight, but, you know, we have four kids apply for that extra section at Madison School. Everything becomes a moot point.
I think that's true.
And we're putting the cart a little bit before the horse.
I'm going to make a motion for amendment to the people. And I, no, I can't discuss it unless there's a second, but.
You need to cast a gavel, Madam Chairman, to do that.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. I would like to move to amend the motion for the additional 4K site at Madison Elementary to start in the fall of 2020.
Do we have a second for that motion? Hearing none, the motion fails. The amendment to the motion fails.
Any other discussion? Then I'll make a comment. Just, I'm for the, I'm for opening a site at Madison. My personal vote may not reflect that only because I think for two big reasons. One, I think the timing of this, I think we could roll it out better if we did it before 4K enrollment, so all parents registering see that option and we could really let the community know about it rather than rolling something like this out after. We've already had 4K enrollment for next year for registration period. And I just think the process would be cleaner if we do it at the beginning of the registration period. The other thing is what I referred to before, just not knowing how we're going to support this many sections. We have 194 kids already registered for next year. We have 12 sections. So that puts about 16 kids in each section. If we have another 25 to 30 kids, because I'm not as good as those kids on the band, but anyway, but if we have those extra numbers of, say, either 30 or 25 to 30, we would still have 18 to 19 kids in each section. And our, our sections are pretty much defined at 17 to 20 if they're full. So I'm not sure how we're going to sustain this number of sections unless we have a better plan to do so in place before we do that. So that's why I made the motion, I did, to amend, thinking if we waited, you know, and did it in a more timely manner for registration, et cetera, we could have thought through all of those accommodations on how we would sustain this many sections with the numbers we have. And I don't think we've done that.
I hear you and I respect your thoughts on this, although I do remember during our discussions that we have talked to administration about the difficulty that might occur if we decide now to add another section at Madison School when registration has been completed. Also, I guess I'd say we heard from Erin as well, the secretary here at Central that takes care of all that notification and all the detail. And although it's clunky, I'll agree with you in terms of how we might be able to roll that out, I don't think it's impossible. And I got the assurance from district administration due to letters that they would send out and notifications that this would be doable. You know, we still have quite a few months before 4K starts. So I guess from that standpoint, even though I respect your thought and I certainly understand it, probably in the, you know, we had gone back a few months ago, maybe that would have been the best thing to do. But I think we've come this far and I will be one that will be voting to approve the one section or a section or whatever it takes at Madison School and implement it this coming fall.
I, I agree with you on a lot of your points, Francis. I think it's kind of a lumpy year. It feels like we're putting the cart before the horse before we have a strategic plan. But I also think that, you know, Ryan, you laid out a really clear scenario at our meeting on Monday night. You had a really clear scenario for adding the section at Madison. And then I asked the question, what happens if we don't? And that feels like it's more of a mess if we don't add the section right now. But I want to come back to, we need a vision and a plan that the community stakeholders are part of, the kindergarten teachers are part of, parents should be able to be consulted as part of it. And so it's my clear expectation that next year we are going to have the Cadillac model of 4K blended program with a really good collaborative strategic plan. So this year feels like a lumpy transition, but I agree with Dale. With all of that in consideration, I think it's the right move for us to, to move to the site at Madison.
I agree with your idea of getting that, that plan, that vision, the plan, everything all laid out in terms of the program. Again, as the old guy, the gold fart on the committee, I'll go back to when 4K was started. And although there was some vision for the program at that time, to be honest, there's financial reasons for adding programs at times and that might have been one of them for 4K. And there were some plans, there were some, I don't know if you want to call it a vision at that time, it was a literacy-based 4K program and so on, but I don't think anybody foresaw some of the changes that have taken place with 4K coming down the viking years since. And we certainly are in need of going back and revisiting all that and making sure not only take a look at where we've been, what we're going to do now, and how this affects kids and the community in the future.
As the, as the newcomer on the, on the committee and looking at, aside from the history, I'm looking at the data that was presented to us, which is significant and offers, if you, if you dig into it, and I have to dig into it very deeply, to see that all of the, all of the rudiments are there to do exactly what we are suggesting, which is a strategic plan and a, a standard of, of 4K program, programming that is, it's already there. And we already have the components to put that together and, and there is a need for that. And I think that it's important that we know that that is, that is where we are kind of reformulating slightly or just, or defining what's there and then adding to a, a 4K program that, that should, should be top notch. We have everything in place to do that, but offering the full benefit of having more choice for the, for the parents of the North Campus. Or is this, I'm sorry. I smiled because I came from a city where we drove 40 miles. No, fine. Okay.
So we're, I believe what you'll see is we're going to gain some students. Right now, Washington's full pipe, Piper's full, and there's a waiting list. And I don't know, but I think if we don't go ahead with this program, you may have some parents that may not send their kids to 4K. So I think it's important to move forward with this so that we can ensure that the, the place they want to be at, where you can send their student.
And I don't like the term pilot program. Never liked it, but this is a program that will give us a number of indicators. It will tell us if maybe parents do have more of a preference to have their kids in a school-based 4K program. And I say that reluctantly because our community centers have been such great partners and worked with us from the beginning and helped us out also financially. But we're giving parents choice here and I think that's the most important thing, to think about the well-being of those kids and to make sure that the parents have the choices that they have in terms of where they want to put their kids for 4K. It's as simple as that to me.
I, when Dale says he's the old guy.
You're pretty old.
I'm pretty old.
I was at the last meeting.
Wow. I'm not joining.
I'm first to admit it.
I have red hair.
In 1990, when we moved to the community, I got involved with Pipey, the preschool, and the King and manager. And as the public schools started to look at adding 4K, I called Bruce King and said, I want to be a part of this. I really feel strongly about this issue and this has been one of my passions over the year. What I feel we're doing here tonight by adding this section is adding more parent choice. But more than that, we're trying to ensure with a strategic plan going forward that we have quality programs in all of our centers, in our community-based ones and the school ones. Years of long-range studies have shown that early childhood will be repaid for every dollar we spend, up to $13 in return. Everything from more students graduating from high school to less smoking, to.
Lower incarceration rates.
Lower incarceration rates. The statistics go on and on, but it's based on, it has to be a quality program. So with that, I will be full-heartedly voting to approve this move tonight.
And I, I want to make clear that it, when it was presented to us, and you can correct it.
We can.
That if we add the section, we would still be offering all the current sections that are present at Washington School and not in our base programs. And so, just so nobody misunderstands, but I support all this. I, I am still struggling with the sustainability, the financial aspects, because we are a full-time teacher, et cetera, when we already have enough space for the kids. So I'm trying to figure out how we sustain that over time financially because we're spending money on the program.
There is a range of sustainability and that is, correct me if I'm wrong, is it 60 to 20 or is it 17 to 20?
17 to 20.
So having all of our programs at 17, I'm all for smaller classrooms. I, I really am. And I, I mean, I, you know, I'm keeping my personal concerns, you know, if I was the parent of a four-year-old or several four-year-olds at this, at this, because I did have several four-year-olds, okay. But, I, I, well, so, so I would say that, that this is putting us, still within, the projected additions of, of students over the summer still puts us within the sustainability range at the low end. And I say amen, let's keep it low. Keep it, yeah, maybe 16 to 17.
I would add to that, Sam, that part of the strategic plan review needs to be reevaluating what those class sizes.
Exactly.
Because 24-year-olds is a big.
That's, that's, that's. That's not. Does anybody agree with that?
I think that that's a really strong, I think we have, we have consensus on that, that this move to Madison is also a strong commitment on the part of the board, that we're going to make a commitment to move towards smaller class sizes across the board with 4K.
Okay. So we'll find out a lot about how this we move forward with that strategic plan.
I think we have a lot of time to discuss this unless I'm wrong. I think everyone just had an opportunity to, so, I don't know, Mr. Harlock, I, the other night, I think it's time to.
Anyone else?
Call a question. I think it's time to move on.
And we have to vote on calling the question.
Okay.
The only, make the motion to call the question.
I won't call the question. I'll just say, let's move on.
You can call it. Okay, then we'll go ahead and take the vote. Since we don't have.
What's the actual vote? What are we saying?
The additional 4K site at Madison.
It would be the motion to add a 4K up to, to sections of 4K at Madison Elementary.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheney?
Yes.
Mrs. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
And the next item is the approval of an additional 1.0 full-time equivalency 4K teacher position to staff. And so.
We need a motion.
We need a motion. Okay. Dorothy? Okay. Now, I have, Dr. Christians. It says approval, but 1.0, so does that definitely mean we're having two sections? Because when you presented to us, you said up to two, two sections.
Correct. I mean, how, how we staff this is going to be driven by, well, this is the thing from the staffing perspective, because this is a hard-to-fill position and we're not going to know what the final registration replacements are going to be for some time. If we want to hire the best, then we really need to make a commitment to the 1.0 and get after the hiring process right now. If for whatever reason it does not come up to be enough numbers for those two sections, then I think we need to reevaluate how we utilize that 1.0 staffing. And we've got some preliminary thoughts that the administrative team does on how that may work if we only end up with one, um, section.
So no matter whether we have one or two sections, we're still hiring 1.0?
We would, we would advertise and, and seek to recruit a 1.0 4K position.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheney?
Yes.
Mrs. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Okay.
And the next one is approval of travel to the State Finance and Investment Challenge Bowl, which would be next month, and that's a trip to New Orleans. And everybody's had the chance to look at that proposal. I will entertain a motion.
Here.
Move second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mrs. Cheney?
Yes.
Giacchides?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Okay. And the next one is approval of travel to the National Science Bowl competition and that's later this month. And those details are in there in the, entertain a motion.
Move two seconds.
A second, okay. And then the only thing I'd like to add is keep the kids on this trip to Madison. I believe regionally, I just wonder if members are better prepared.
I sure will.
Because she has a child. Okay.
Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Leifite?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheney?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, may I interrupt? I'd like to take a minute to say goodbye and thank you.
You may. Would you vacation enough for other people to say something?
I think I'd better go first.
Where's the plate?
Actually, I brought my own. First of all, I'm going to apologize for reading this, but after being involved in education in our community, as Francis went through my resume, parent, substitute teacher, and school board member, this job has become part of me. So I worry I'm going to get emotional, so please excuse me. I was first elected in 2008 and then re-elected in 2013 and 16. Mark beat me in 2011. And we've become great friends. Over the last 11 years, I found it an honor to serve the Marshfield community as a school board member. I will miss serving, but I am thrilled to have Dr. Sitwalla join this board. In my experience, Kajal is a progressive thinker and will be a great school board member. I've learned a lot over the past 11 years and think we should be proud of our district. There's something unique about Marshfield School District and I think it has a lot to do with the culture of Marshfield Board members, administrators, staff, and support staff. They are a group of true professionals who go way beyond their job descriptions in order to do what's best for students. Over this period of time, I am particularly proud of the positive steps we've been able to make together as a board as well as a community in the areas of curriculum, personalized learning, new schools, new athletic facilities, and now tonight, another 4K section. In the end, I believe we are a village and it takes all of us. I hope we can look back and take pride and encouragement from the progress we've made since 2008. But at the same time, I know and recognize there's more work to do. We need to ensure each child is, has an equitable education and that we become more culturally competent. These are all areas that deserve sustained attention and effort on part of this board. It is my firm belief that if we all work together to find common ground, the school district of Marshfield will continue to be the inspiring, rigorous, and truly nurturing place my children, my husband and I have experienced over the past 30 years. Excuse me. So I hope I've made a small difference and with that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Is my turn? No, wait. Okay. And you have to indulge. If anyone would like to.
Me first.
I'm going to start with her.
Okay.
Amber, Marshfield is losing a huge asset, as you all know. You've meant huge to the community, to the school district, all over, to what you've taught, and most importantly, bringing to the board and always reminding us, students first. Thank you. I've learned so much from you.
Thank you, Mark.
Gosh, I can't imagine the school board or this community without you. You know, being a school board, as you know, is kind of an interesting gig, isn't it? It's tough. It's a blast. We have heated moments, we have behind closed doors. But you know what? You have brought that consistent commitment to children in everything you do and you're so well-informed on the board. You're just as knowledgeable about the AP programs as you are about the needs of kids that don't wear coats. And you're going to be impossible to replace on this school board and in this community. And I'm also going to miss my friends, so it's going to make me sad to walk by that house. But we love you and we're really happy Kajal's here. She's going to fill a different space. She's never going to take your space, nobody ever will. We're going to miss you so much and we love you.
Thank you. Right now?
I have as much as I can say. But I just can't thank you enough for your encouragement from the get-go. Before I became elected, I appreciated your copies and just guidance about the whole, the whole odyssey of, of getting here and then, and then being here. Thank you for your gentle, gentle nudges as well as direct urges to do what I do. And just, and just your knowledge has been so, so invaluable. I, I watch with interest and try to, but I can't.
I'm not good at goodbyes.
We'll see you later.
And we'll find out what kind of fish you've gotten at Lake Interalls. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much. On a personal note, I was thinking back to over 25 years ago when we arrived in Marshfield, not quite 30, but closing in on 30. And one of the first people to welcome us to the community were, you know, Tom invited us to her home, but they had invented your first home to purchase. And so that was kind of exciting and, and delightful evening. I have no idea what we ate, I just remember this good time of getting to know you and, and I just know that the community you're going to is lucky to have you because I know that you can help us be involved in whatever's going on in whatever community we live in.
Thank you so much.
And we do have a gift from the board, something classic for a classic woman.
Oh, wow. So much. And. With that, I'll remake that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. And everyone said.
Hi. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am.